All right, welcome everyone. Today is Monday, May 2nd, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kirkas, would you please call us to order?
Yes. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 235, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted in the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as on the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Please join me for pleasurable weekends.
My delectance to the flag. The United States of America, into the Republic of Japan, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Ralph Clayton.
Here.
James Winano.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Soder.
Here.
Alexis Taylor is absent. Eric Gallico.
Here.
Daniel Scannamayo is absent. Lanieta Lawrence is absent. Rick Lambert.
Is absent.
No, I'm sorry. Barbara Fidza.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, first item on our agenda is approval of minutes for April 18th, 2022. It's a regular meeting. Any concerns? Otherwise, I'd like to get a motion to approve minutes.
Move to approve.
I second it. Eric will second it.
Eric was not here. Right, Eric's on April 18th?
April 18th. I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Everyone in attendance, should I, those people that are not eligible to vote are Jennifer Soder, Jim Henry, and Eric Gallico. All others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved for April 18th, 2022.
All right, the next item for discussion is Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC. And I'm here today on behalf of AP Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC, which is a fantastically long name, for the designated subsequent redeveloped for Block 4001, lots 2 through 15. This board granted preliminary and final major site plan approval and minor subdivision approval on September 13th of 2021 for the construction of 226 multifamily units with retail and associated amenities. Under the municipal land use law, we had 190 days to perfect the minor subdivision, which took us to March 22nd of 2022. Unfortunately, we have not yet perfected the subdivision because we have not yet received all of our ancillary approvals. Specifically, we've not yet received confirmation of compliance with the CAFRA permit for the waterfront redevelopment area. We have been diligently pursuing those approvals, as many of you know. We initially started the process of getting the CAFRA compliance letter contemporaneously with applying to this board back in March of 2021. After we received your approval, we resubmitted in around October of 2021 to reflect the changes that you requested as part of the approval. We met with the DEP along with representatives from the city, including the business administrator and the mayor and others in November of 2021 to discuss generally the impact of stormwater regulations within the waterfront. We then, in around January, received back more comments from the DEP, which we turned around and addressed in comments, in a letter, back to them in March 14th of 2021. We met with them again at the end of March of 2021 to discuss those comments, received additional comments on April 14th, and then we addressed those comments nine days later, just last Monday, on April 25th. So we've certainly been diligent in seeking that letter. We hope that with this last submission last Monday that we've now addressed each and every one of their technical comments. But unfortunately, we did not do so within the 190 days. We did receive several other approvals that were required, including the waiver from the county planning board, the treatment works approval, which came in just last Friday, and the approvals required under the subsequent developer agreement for the financial agreement and special assessment agreement. But we are here this evening seeking your approval for an extension, which the municipal land use law allows to be up to an additional year. We hope we do not need a year, but it is something that the board can do and we then wouldn't have to appear back before you within that time period. That's all. We thank you for your consideration on this.
Any questions from anybody on the planning board?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think one year is a rather extensive time period. And I certainly understand the applicant's situation, but I would recommend that we do not extend it for a year, that we extend it for 90 days or 180 days, but I think a year is too long a period.
So you're suggesting like six months instead?
Six months, three months, six months. But yes.
Respectfully, three months, I think, would not be enough. I hope, I hope three months is enough, but I would, I would be afraid we'd be right back before this board because each time we've resubmitted to the DEP, we thought that was it. And so, you know, in October, we thought that was it, and in March, we thought that was it again. I hope that when we submitted last week, that that's it, but I can't guarantee that they will turn around their comments within three months and that it will, they won't have just one more thing for us to address.
So you think that three months would be a hardship?
Three months would be, I think, too short because by the time we would find out it wasn't enough, I'd be back here writing another letter. And we did write in March, now it's May. So I would say at least six months, just to be sure, because we also don't want to take up the board's time unnecessarily.
Anything from our professionals? Any, any questions or concerns from our professionals? No?
I tend to agree that it seems like we should look for a six month. Just enough, it would be good for us to get an update, right? You know, so I think a six month seems fair.
Okay. I think that that seems, seems within reason.
It certainly does take time to get responses though from the DEP. So we have to test to that, so.
But when, you know, if it's taking longer, you know, because we're, we received your approval September of '21, so we're nine months out. Six months will be, you know, so we just like to know what's happening.
Okay. All right, then I can propose that we, we approve six months.
I'll second that motion.
Shall we take a vote?
Sure.
So we have a motion by Barbara Fidza. And then cited by Jim Henry. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ralph Clayton.
Yes.
James Winano. Um, that's a good question.
It's just, yeah, it's just on the extension, so.
It's just everyone here, right?
Correct.
James Winano, yes. Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Soder.
Yes.
Eric Gallico.
Yes.
And Barbara Fidza.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Okay, next applicant, 649 Madison.
Good evening. By May, Andrew Karras of the firm Fox Rothschild, on behalf of the applicant, 649 LLC. We're here for a continuation of a hearing with regard to property at 649 Madison Ave., Block 2509, Lot 5. Just to recap a little bit where we are with this application, as the board is aware, it's a two-story commercial building that's in the CBD redevelopment area, the CBD mixed-use district. The only issue from what I can recall and from reviewing my notes that is still outstanding has to do with the facade that is situated on the Madison Avenue frontage of the building. The one issue that came up is with regard to the new windows and doors that were installed, whether or not it could be set back a little bit, create a little bit of a gap within that front facade. I believe that's the only issue that is pending. What we're going to do is we're going to have our architect present some photographs tonight to show what is there, what is there with regard to the brick. Unfortunately, it's an impossibility when you see the brick, how it was done, the lip that is behind the windows. But we certainly took a look at it, we tried to address it, and I think the photographs will reflect the situation that we're in with regard to what was installed, how it was installed, and why we're in the situation we're in with regard to the positioning of that front facade. I believe my architect, Dan, had been sworn before. Do you want to swear him again?
I'll just swear, I guess, for the record. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just stating your name, spelling your last for the record, please?
Sure, Daniel Condatore, C-O-N-D-A-T-O-R-E.
And while we're doing that, why don't I just re-swear on the board professionals as well? Do you swear affirm the testimony about the give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record again.
Donna Miller, Clerk Katton Hins, Board Planner.
Doug Clallan, Insight Engineering, Board Engineer.
Thank you very much. Mr. Karras, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Just one thing that I'd like to find out where we stand. I know that we received new drawings. Are you going to be reviewing these?
I can talk about them.
To show us what the modifications were that are on these compared to what we saw in the past?
Correct.
Okay. So bring this into evidence?
I believe that is A7?
Yes, they look the same.
Okay. All right, so A7 is revised architectural plans, and if we can have revision date on that?
4/20.
4/20?
Let's double check.
Yeah, 4/1.
Can you bring those up?
I'm going to want to start with the image first, or?
Yeah, why don't you just bring up the plans? Let's go through the revisions on the plans and then we'll go through.
So revisions are rather simplified. It's kind of a conjunction of when we've met the last time and we had the feedback from the, from the board as to, if you remember, presented various options with the muttons over the glazing and the trim work and the band work that we were going to add to it. So from that feedback, and after, we went to the site, and I guess we'll go back and we'll also show pictures after this of how we weren't able to push the windows back. This is the kind of culmination, the final elevation of what we're proposing. Also simply, like, it came up in the last hearing is we added the screening on the roof on the east side, four-foot screen wall, the screen mechanical units that are, you know, facing that parking lot side. So that was added to the plans there. That's on sheet A102. What we're showing here is what we would propose to be the final design, adding the fan-type muttons to the window and the glazing, glazing at the top, based on feedback from the, from the board. And then we're also introducing a horizontal band that is proud of the storefront work. Originally, we had an option with a horizontal band that showed some dental work and some other details. The feedback that we had was that, you know, the band was important, but we did not want to try to mimic or copy some of the other architectural elements that were existing on primarily Bond Street. So we've created that band. We have a little bit of trim at the top and a little trim at the bottom to provide some shadow lines and some relief. You can, you can see that here. And then, just to kind of enlarge the elevation of that typical kind of architecture at the top with the fanning, and then a detail of, you know, how we propose to do it. So what we would do is, the existing storefront that's there has got that aluminum band in there. Now that's about eight inches tall. We would add blocking to that to kind of bring out some relief and then apply like an AZAC, a PVC fascia AZAC board. And then on top, we would put two trim pieces to kind of create this, this profile here with a little bit of shadow line at the top and a little bit of shadow line at the bottom. And it would stick out proud of the existing facade instead of flat because currently, you know, the aluminum that's there now is, is close to flush with the brickwork. So those are the only updates that we have based on, like I said, our visit from the site and the feedback from the board at the last hearing.
In terms of what, the reason that you couldn't set it back, why don't we go through the photographs to demonstrate that?
Sure. Can I ask just a couple of questions?
Sure.
So this is an assembly you're creating out of AZAC? Is, and some wood blocking behind it, yes. So it's not a custom, and just not trying to imply a value judgment at all, I'm just asking, it's not like a custom panel that you're having manufactured to fit? No. You're creating the assembly? Yeah, in the field. I'm going to pull up a picture here that kind of, this is, so this is a picture in transition, when the, when the original windows were taken out, and then the important part here is what you see in the detail is, if you look at the top of the arches on all three of these, there's this finished brick that's in the front that is, you know, apparent from everybody on the street. And then behind it is the kind of structural brickwork that was existing. So the, the window itself kind of wrapped around that and inside that original opening. When we put our new storefront system in, all that brickwork was cleaned up, but the storefront aligns itself with that roll-out course, that arch course, and that's where the window is now. So in order for us to push the window back, we would have to basically throw out that, that glazing and build a new one. And you can see some of it, all the damage. There's, there's wood that was rotted and decayed behind there. We took the time to clean a lot of that up behind the glass and along the jam work. And all this got cleaned up. Some of these bad, you know, pieces that were loose came out, that were falling apart. So the backup really wasn't in very good condition. And you can see that, that kind of step. I have a picture now, close up. So this is the window installed.
Why don't we do this? I just want to mark that as the photograph that we're just looking at was A8 for identification.
Do you want to mark all of the photographs?
We can do them all as they were presenting tonight as A8 for identification.
Yeah, so now this is the picture as you see it today. So now you can see clearly behind the glass is that brickwork and how we cleaned it up on the, on the jam side and behind the glass, all that work was redone on the interior. And in order to, you know, like I said, push the glass back, we would have to take that window out. The frame would be useless, the glass would be useless. And we'd have to rebuild it inset of that.
So it's not a matter of just taking it and pushing it back a little bit?
No, no, you're not taking it out and reinstalling it. That's not what we'd be able to do.
And when we're looking at that inset in terms of the brick, that, again, it matches what was the original condition in there. Obviously fixed up, made a lot better than it was, but that mirrors what the original brick was, am I correct?
Yes, and this is, I believe. So this is the finish on the inside. You can see all the brickwork that was rehabilitated, repointed. Some new brick was applied. I think it's a very nice elevation for the store that is Killer Pies, it's in there now, brings in a lot of natural light, makes the space open and friendly, inviting, engages the street, which was the purpose for us replacing that glass in the initial stages.
So all the questions are here?
Do you have any, any, any pictures of what it looked like before you took the windows out?
I might have.
Probably have something that we saw initially.
Yeah, I'm looking. If I have a, um, an old street view or something.
There. They clearly see recesses there.
Yeah, and what it did, you can see the top of the brick there, the way you have that area that's inset against, obviously from the other pictures, was another layer of brick. And then that white trim goes under than that brick. By the way, I had noticed this picture and I see the, I call them swirls, without those boxes that we incorporated into the plans that are presented tonight. My personal, I happen to like those without those square boxes, just as swirls, but that's a personal thing. Something for the board to consider.
The fans, like, so.
The fans.
This is a true, like, half, like a half moved window. Our window has a little more verticality on the side. So the fan work is in, in the arch portion, but once it, the window becomes square, we just projected those lines down. And he's saying he would prefer just to have the fans.
That's a personal thing, but I'm not an architect, so.
Does anybody on the board have any, any questions, statements that they'd like to make? Any questions? I know personally, I am disappointed that we can't do that recess.
I understand the board's concern. It's something that we did investigate, but obviously based upon the conditions and what was already installed, it'd be, it's impossible to take that down to reassess it.
You mean to reuse the existing window?
Exactly.
Right. But it could be done if you had to put in a different one.
It would be a whole new.
Well, it would be a whole new window.
Well, you're also talking about counters that are in the back. You'd have to redesign the interior of the inside because as you can see from the other pictures, those counters go right up against where that window is. So you're talking about a redesign of that front area. You found the inside, the picture?
Uh, yeah. Like, as it is now?
Yeah, the one that you showed before.
Yeah, I just had it ready to go. So all this, and this is a lot of the work that was done with the tenant, so that would all have to be redone.
I'm sorry, can you, can you just zoom it in, like, by the, where the counter is?
Where the shelf is over here?
Just a little lower. So, so you've got a seating counter?
Mm-hmm.
And it's flush with the brick wall? Is that it?
It's, it's in front of it, yeah.
Is it flush or is it up there? I thought it was flush. That's what I'm seeing. Oh, no, you have the brick, you have the brick done and then you have the counter.
You have a brick sill.
Right, because it's the thickness of the wall.
Right.
Yeah. And so the old windows were in that thickness.
Correct.
So is that counter wrap toward the glass, Dan? Or is it just straight?
It's just straight across. It doesn't go into the glasses.
Or cut? So could that square window be pushed back into the space? Because it looks like that dimension.
No, because when you go in there, as you can see, it's up also against the brick.
Oh, because it's face mounted?
Correct.
Okay. Because it's, okay, right, because it's the interior brick and the exterior brick?
Correct.
Okay.
It's really unfortunate how we ended up here. It really is. This whole application, how we ended here is, is really unfortunate. Does the board have anything else that they would like to ask of the applicant?
If I can have my client address the board.
Is he coming forward?
Do you want to do cross or?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to do this real quick? Or do you want to have any other questions for the public?
I can answer in the public, that's easiest.
Well, before, why don't we finish with the architect?
Yeah.
If anybody has any, if you want to open it up to the public.
And see if any questions are.
Yes, does the, the professionals have anything that they would ask of the architect? If not, then let's open it up for questions to the pub, from the public that they would like to ask regarding the testimony? Anyone from the public?
Yes. Hi, Warner Baumgartner, city historian. I just have a simple question. Why were the original windows all removed in the first place?
Well, that you may want to ask Mr. Sackman, not the architect.
Will the architect present?
I can tell you, they were done so we can put in storefront windows for a business that's going to be open on to Madison Ave. Very simple.
It's a business decision.
It's not a business decision, it's an architectural decision to allow for a business to operate in that space.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Like to swear on Mr. Sackman? Or did we?
If you could. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you state your name for the record, spelling your last, please?
Carter Sackman. Sackman, S-A-C-K-M-A-N.
Thank you, Mr. Sackman.
Mr. Sack, before you, first thing I just want to address with you, these windows that were installed, permits were submitted to the construction department, building department, in order to do that, am I correct?
Yes.
And you received permits allowing for that work to be done, am I correct?
Yes.
Did anybody ever object to it from the building department and say that work could not be done?
No.
Please go.
Listen, I, I understand this is subjective and there's a concern about maintaining historical features, but I'll say this, with this particular building, that it, if anybody's had the opportunity to go there, since it's opened up, I would, I would recommend it. Killer Pies is operating, I think, a good business right now. I think it's important in some of these, to repurpose a lot of these historical businesses, is to engage the street. You know, businesses and, and their formula and what they need to survive, I think there can be harmony between the two. And I will say, glazing is a part of accentuating some historical characteristics of buildings so that they are visible. I mean, I think personally, I laugh a little because I get there's a concern, but I think it's beautiful. If you walk in and the guy did a great job, this space has been vacant for years on end. And the two, a couple businesses that were in there failed. A closed bank structure with no light, with, with very little engagement in the street, is not easy for a business to operate under. It just is not. And that site, and we all know, if we've been in this town long enough, know that that site has failed many times. I think this is a great mix and harmony between two forces working together. And I think we found a good business that will hopefully be successful there. So I think this is a good thing, a win-win personally. And, but I truly understand it's subjective, but hopefully you all go take a look at it because it really is in person. I think you'll, you'll be pleased, I would imagine, most people more than not because I've only gotten a ton of great comments about engaging that site, about the new business that's in there and what it means. So that's just on a very much a personal note from what I've been able to ascertain. That's really all I had to say.
But change in the windows, how much square footage of light did you add?
A lot, if you look at it.
A lot, it's not, I mean, I'll go back to the architect.
I wouldn't have the exact number of square footage of the existing windows. But you can see the pictures. I mean, the pictures tell it all. If you look at that picture. If you look at the older picture and you look at its framing and the amount of light that emitted through the front facade, it's significant. But, you know, yes, columns were kept, there's parapets that were kept. There's a lot of that structure that was kept. Look how closed in that is. I mean, come on. I, I, I mean, to me, it's, it's, there's a rational reason why failure occurred there because not everyone can operate in a bank. Banks, by, by its nature, they're fading out. They're very difficult to repurpose. Believe me, I'm at 574 Cookman with that bank. That's a hard one to figure out. I've got another bank, right? I had 601 Madison. They're not easy to figure out.
And by the way, those structures years ago, including the Steinbeck Building, And by the way, those structures years ago, including the Steinbeck Building, all new windows and doors were put on the ground floor for the retail space. Keep it in mind that your redevelopment plan, the UEZ guidelines, in your own redevelopment plan has in there, that your retail space should have 70 to 75% glazing. It's a, let me just finish. It's a recognition that if you're going to have active retail on the street, you need people to be able to see inside, you need light to come in, and it has to be engaging with pedestrians and with consumers. And that's the reason it's within that plan. That's what was done.
However, we have discussed, and I think the board was in agreement, that the requirement for transparency, while might be in tension with historic preservation, does not override it prima facie.
Doesn't say that in the plan.
It, that, correct, it doesn't say that in the plan, but the point about historic preservation is historic preservation. Now, Mr. Sackman, you do many great projects for our community, and you bring a vibrant, you know, commercial life that we need and we need to continue. You've been here before us many times, and I, you are to be commended for your commitment to this community that we've been a part of for a long time. The problem arises from the fact that we have to think about the district as a whole hanging together as a historic expression of our town. Therefore, there are failures on this side where the board has not been engaged early enough, either through procedures that aren't there supported, or through just willful not doing it, that we need to change in the future. That as these types, as these types of projects come before you, it's better to reach out earlier to say, what are the priorities in terms of historic preservation on this property?
I'm going to.
And we are now in a position where we, you were issued lawfully, lawfully issued permits, and we have a different perspective about what was important here. And your experience should tell you that coming to us earlier for consultation is a better idea than to not. And that's it. That's where I land for it.
Well, listen.
And I think this is a wonderful project.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree that the process should be different.
The process.
All right, and, and so if everybody knew, knew exactly the procedure, I think you're right 100%. I'm just trying to point out, because I, that's the third bank we're talking about in this small district. If you look at that, now I'm just appealing to what we all are looking, because I would still argue potentially in the future.
You're arguing about an aesthetic and, and you agree it's subjective.
But, but hold on, let me just, let me just finish my thought. I don't, I don't know if I came later with another site, we wouldn't, even if the process was different, we wouldn't be having a similar conversation.
On the other side, a consultation about what you wanted to do.
Well, I just want to say, the three banks that I've worked on, you all know them, right? The 601 Madison, all got new glazing. I don't know if you remember, those windows were closed in on the corner there that wraps around where Cookman meets Madison, all new glazing, more light. I think it looks great.
Those were different. The, the styles of the building are quite different, and the amount of existent, of extant glazing at 609 Madison is very different from what the expression, the architectural expression of an idiosyncratic, unique building. Now, I'm not saying, I, I.
I'm just saying they were enlarged to the opening.
I don't want to go in support of your application. However, the future, let's talk about the future.
Mr. Kleep, I have a way to deal with that, and I would encourage this board, your plan has in there a facade committee. It provides for it. Do it.
We need to figure this out.
Do it.
This is what we have.
Because this avoids all this.
The, this board needs to establish what this process is so that we don't find ourselves in this position again.
It's in there. If you can establish that board, it's the easiest way to deal with this situation.
However, your experience now should be unequivocal. We should ask first. In the meantime, you should just say, hey, it's a great idea to start this conversation before we go ahead and rip out historic material that is clearly historic.
By the way, in the district, I wouldn't mind if, if there was a recommendation that you had, a facade committee that reviewed any, any building there. I, I have no problem collaborating to make, ensure that we get something that works. I'm just saying, my own personal opinion with this particular application, I don't argue with everything you just said, is, this has a long history, this site. There, there is not a lot of light that comes through to establish a viable business. I just want everybody to be aware of that. There are significant features to this as to why it's handicapped, and why things went in the direction they did, and why people applied, why they applied, and why a business came in with a different type of design.
I think a more collaborative approach at the start might have ended in a better solution for all of us, and that's my only.
But it also, it also would have ended with many few, fewer meetings, many fewer discussions.
I agree.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, you agree.
This has taken, so let's take this as a, as a large lesson for the future, because this is, as we all know, this is not the end.
That's why.
And, and let's hope that there are many more.
I'm with you.
Not only for the properties that Sackman owns, but for all the developers.
Everyone.
Let's get the procedure in place so we can avoid this, and there is that collaborative approach.
I'd like to make a comment. And I'm glad you brought up the UEZ guidelines. I'm sorry, but I cannot agree with the architect's opinion that he has met these guidelines. The guidelines are there for a purpose. You know, the city spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars and years, literally years, on developing a master plan which incorporated the downtown business district and the guidelines that were going with that district. These plans do not follow. And let's just walk away from the windows for a minute. The rest of the plan does not follow the guidelines. And I'm sorry, I cannot agree with the architect.
Respectfully, I'd have to disagree. The, the UEZ guidelines are subjective in many aspects. And when it talks, let me just finish. When it talks about compatibility, it doesn't say it has to be that or this. It's just compatible. That's a subjective determination. So there's area within which, and it gives flexibility between the board and the applicant to try to work towards, something which I believe we have done in this application.
I, I hear what you're saying, but let me point out just one little item. The windows on the third floor that you're coming up with, the guidelines tell you what type of windows are acceptable, and they tell you the configuration that is acceptable. These windows do not.
I, I don't agree that it says anything that kind.
Would you like to read it?
Let me know where. It talks about windows on a historical structure, not in its separate apartment when you're adding a structure up top.
When you go for a building permit, you don't get a building permit for half a building. And the guidelines here are for the entire building.
I have page 10 right in front of me.
Okay. I would have taken.
I, I can read from you. When we get to the fourth paragraph of page 10, it says, "New building windows and storefronts must be compatible to scale, materials, and proportions of those on surrounding buildings." It also talks about existing windows, but what we're talking about is in addition to a building which is separate in a park.
Third paragraph on page 10 says, "All windows except storefronts shall be operable. Sliders and awning windows are not permitted." Now, you've got casements in there. Okay, it does not say casements are not acceptable, but awnings are not acceptable. What's the difference? 90 degrees, turn one, 90 degrees. They're the same window, basically. And if you, if you look at the intent of the, the windows, they're supposed to line up with the lower floor windows, and they're supposed to be in the same basic configuration. That's just one item, and I don't want to belabor the point. You know, the presentation has been made, and that's something that's been discussed, and everybody's got their own opinion on it. But that's, that's just an example of, in my opinion, we were not following the master plan and/or the redevelopment plan for downtown area.
Anybody else have anything else for Mr. Sackman from the board? Anything from our professionals? Anything from the public? Questions of Mr. Sackman, based on his testimony? Okay. Does that conclude your?
That concludes our presentation.
Okay. Best that I can see of any conditions that we were talking about here, Mr. Beekman, is that I'm assuming that all the mullions that we were talking about, the thick bands and the thin door, that's in the new drawings that we have, the scheme, they're all here. So we're assuming that they're there, so they're not a condition, because we've already discussed them and you've agreed that that's going to happen.
Correct.
Correct. There was a discussion about a mural on the east side of the building. I'd like to still continue to keep that as a, as a condition.
Is that mural going to be approved?
It has to be approved by the Public Arts Committee as all murals.
By the way, I'm going to make a comment regarding the murals. Something that the city should consider, I was out in Hawaii a few weeks ago, and they have an art area. They have all these murals. You can download an app, put it up to the mural, it comes alive with AR. It is one of the most fascinating things I've ever seen. Something the city should consider in all the murals that are here in Hasbury Park.
The parcel next to that borders us on the east. Do you own that parcel, Mr. Sackman?
The parking lot that's next door? Do you own that?
The parking lot? That's the state.
There's not, there's no development likely there.
No, that's part of the building owned by the state.
Okay, okay. So we have that. Were there any other items? Because I think that everything else that I had was already agreed to. Anybody else here have anything else? Okay. So let's have, I think it's time for comment. Any comments that anyone has planning forward regarding this application? This is your final chance.
I just want to make a quick comment, but I appreciate the conversation and the preparation going forward. The work preparation would be kind of a tough. The only, my only comment about the lighting, I feel like getting more daylight getting makes a lot of sense, but I feel like there could have been more of the original detail kept and more light than was there. Like, there was definitely an in-between, I think, because I'm looking at the images of scrap, when scrap was there, and you have that depth. It does make a big difference when you have that depth in the window. And there could have been other changes that I think that would have allowed more light, not as much as light as you have now, but in-between would still retain some of that structure. I wish that we could have gone to that.
Skylating. You could have put a skylight in the roof, getting more light into the building, leaving a lot of the original detail. Now, we're not here to suggest what should have, could have been done, but a more collaborative approach could have arrived there sooner. You have a five-foot gap between your front facade of your addition and the existing pavement of the thing. What's the architectural term? In my office, we would call it the thing.
What, what, what was it?
Just the, the facade.
The facade, the pavement above the pavement, that scroll?
Yeah, see? You don't have the word for it either. But the point is, you have space, and I think a, like, approach there could have given you some options.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, you're also talking about engagement. And it, and it's lovely. I mean, space and, I don't know, which is, we all think, we're mourning the loss of the original detail as well.
Any other comments?
My only comment is that internally, we need to work on our processes so that we are giving clear information and direction and also.
Well, that the applicant also gets clear direction.
And that the applicant is coming towards the point where it's, you know, the information and we can share the information and we can make decisions that will not warrant us to this point or doing something that would not have the.
Right. And it's also that, I believe that it's also the approval for something like this, that you were given approval, we're not denying that, that the approval comes from the right place, not necessarily from where it came from. So that's process. Once again, it's process. So.
Yeah, and I think my only thing is that you build, you consistently build value for our community through the projects you do here. Bringing new residents, maintaining businesses in good repair, well-designed projects. But we have to build, part of why Hasbury Park is valuable is because of its historic elements that remain. And every time we peel one away, it becomes less and less and less of what it was. And breathing new life into those things is what we should be doing, but we can do it with a better approach, more sensitive approach. And I, I hope this is a plea that maybe next time you should just sort of step back and say, this might be a good point to just get a consultation rather than just going. That's, that's what, until we figure out our processes, we hope that you will make that.
No, absolutely.
We're looking for your help.
Yeah, I know. I will.
Because you, you own a lot of property.
No, no, I will. Listen, I, there's nothing, listen, I don't like, you know, I've tried to save the Metropolitan Hotel. I'm not the one that wants to knock store buildings down.
You, you, the process is important, and I'll tell you, one of the issues always becomes, when you submit an application for a site plan, you're a hero. And obviously, time is money, especially when you have tenants that want to go away. There has to be a way with creating these committees.
We need to clarify our process. We're asking that you be more sensitive in the future.
Until you get there. No, that's fine. No.
I remember being able to break into these buildings as a kid. You know, me and my brother would.
You're, you're on the record right now.
Yeah, we would walk into buildings.
Set your limitations.
That, I'm sure they were different owners at that time. You know, it was, growing up here was interesting, but that sense of history is getting removed, and we need to do what we can together to protect it.
Any, anybody else have any, any comments? Our professionals?
It's just as long as you say, you think all the stipulations or whatever, as long as.
Everything is.
As long as professionals agree that everything's been addressed, and Andy, you agree, like, everything. So I don't want something left out because we're in a hurry to get home tonight.
So then I'll ask, since I wasn't here last time, I apologize. What was the positive criteria?
Well, it's not C-variants. I think we already established last time.
Okay.
That they're designed exceptions, so we don't have to look at the C-variants criteria.
Well.
Make motion to open to public comment?
So move.
Public comment? Anyone?
Thank you. Warner Baumgartner, city historian.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
And thank you. Have you ever stated your name? So go ahead.
Warner Baumgartner. This has been a very interesting application and a very trying application for me personally, as the city historian. I'm going to offer somewhat of a eulogy at this point.
As long as it's within three minutes, you're good.
Good. This, don't interrupt me. This building was built in 1919, as you see it in that picture right there, by, designed by an architect named Clarence Brazier out of New York City. It was listed in the Monmouth County Historic Sites Inventory in 1980 as a significant architectural example of Flemish design in downtown Hasbury Park, one of the five remaining bank buildings from the turn of the century in Hasbury Park. It has stood, as you see it in that picture, for 103 years. That is no more, simply because of a business decision to tear out the existing windows, wholesale, and replace them with plate glass to let more light into the building. I appreciate all the comments from the board, and I hope that the applicant and everybody else takes them to heart, that there needs to be a balance, a sensitivity to preserving significant historical features of buildings, if not the entire building, and using them for modern purposes. And I think. And I think that point has come across. In the redevelopment plan for the Central Business District, it specifically states that the objective, one of the objectives of the plan is to preserve the architectural and historic integrity of the Central Business District. That is clearly defined as an objective in the redevelopment plan, and what was done to this building does not beat that standard. Also, it says that the design guidelines, quote unquote, the UEZ design guidelines, shall be used. Doesn't say may be used, doesn't say they're subjective, it says they shall be used. And I'm very distressed that the term subjective gets tossed around so casually. It's like learning a language. Architecture, preservation, and history is a specialty field of study with a specific language. There's nothing subjective about it in most cases. So I'm a little distressed by using that as an excuse to do something like this. All in all, I can't say anything about whether I'm against or for this project, but I just wanted to know what we've lost. We've lost an authentic turn-of-the-century bank facade that's existed in Hasbury Park for 103 years. Now, good luck to the pizza parlor, you know, that's great, and I wish everybody luck. And I hope going forward that people pay more attention to what the standards are that the public has adopted. All these plans and all these redevelopment areas are adopted by the public. They're not subjective, they're not, you know, oh, we can pick and choose what parts we want to use. If you want to change the plan, change it. Eliminate preservation and be done with it, if that's the way we're going. But if there's a preservation element in it, it should be enforced and embraced to create value in Hasbury Park. And as far as professional advice... Yes. Okay. As far as professional advice, I'm available. I'm in the book. Everyone has my phone number, and I'm more than happy to give professional historic preservation advice to anybody that asks. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment? All right, motion to close com, public comment. There's one other item that I'd like to add to the, to the conditions, and I'm not sure if we would put this, Mr. Beekman, in conditions, or if we would just make this as a statement. That I remember when this whole thing started, we were talking about historic guidelines and whether this was or was not a historic building, and we went through that, we went around that for a bit. I'd like to make sure that within our resolution, that we include the fact that by moving this application forward, we as a board, it should not be mistaken that we agree that historic guidelines should not have been, that are not applicable. So we're not, we're not making that decision because it is not within our purview to do so. And we don't want it to be mistaken that we have made that decision by moving this forward. So I would like to make sure that that is in the, in the resolution, outs, besides the mural that we have there and everything else that's been, that's been discussed here.
So just to clarify, Madam Chair, so the board does not make any decision regarding the application of historical standards to the subject building, for the most part?
Right.
Question?
Any, can I make a motion to move this application forward with the conditions that were mentioned? Anyone?
I'm with you.
I have a motion by James Banano.
And John...
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. Second? All right. Dear John Moore.
I just got to say something quick. I appreciate what Eric said, what Barbara said, what Jen said, what basically Yvonne, I think what Alva said, and I deeply appreciate Mr. Sakman agreeing, we have to move forward in a different direction, so I'm a yes vote.
Thank you. And Councilwoman of all places?
Yes.
James Banano?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
I'm going to vote no for the reasons I stated before, the questions, I yes.
And who is Governor Sauer? Sarah Gellbo?
Yes.
And finally, Barbara Tritt?
Yes. I really hope that these, that the businesses that come into that area really do well, because you're right, that that building has had some concerns over many, many years. So, thank you.
And I respect the advice I heard tonight, as everyone knows.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you.